And thank you for joining us for the November month of the Planning Program and Zoning Commission meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Our first item on the agenda for today is the approval of the November 10, 2015 Agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Carol and seconded that we approve the agenda for today's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held last month on October 6, 2015. If you've looked those over, could we have a motion?
I move that we approve the meetings of our October 6 meeting.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Jerry and seconded that we approve the minutes from the last month's meeting on October 6, 2015. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the minutes have been approved. And are those now placed on file? Or is that...okay, that hasn't changed, okay. The next item is to receive and place on file the financial report for September 2015, staff report.
This is Schrader with staff. This is through September, which would be 25% of the year. As you go through expense line items, for the most part, we are on track. You know, some run higher than 25%, but that's because some expenses are one-time expenses all up front. On the revenue side, we are sitting pretty good as there as well with anything that's, you know, obviously over 25% being a good thing.
Okay, is there any questions for staff? Okay, we will receive and place on file the financial report for September 2015. At this point in our meeting, this is a time for oral presentations. If anyone has an item that is not on today's agenda, we would ask that you would approach a podium. Please state your name and address for the record. If not, we'll continue on to new business. Our first order for new business is a hearing. This is a request by Mohammed Kudik, and I apologize if I'm not pronouncing anyone's name properly today, to rezone 5.45 acres from R3 RP Planned Multiple Family Residence District to CP Planned Commercial District to allow for the construction of a new electrician contractor business and for future development generally located at the southeast corner of Southland Drive and Sergeant Road, which is off of US Highway 63. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on October 28, 2015." Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Sue and seconded that we receive and place this notice on file. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Staff report.
This is Western with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood and surrounding land use. Townhomes are located directly to the southeast of the site in question, and a professional office building is located to the northeast. The proposed rezon will not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions. The applicant would be required to install sidewalks along the property for pedestrian use. Currently, there are no sidewalks, and as part of the complete streets policy, like I said, we are requiring sidewalks. The site is Zoned R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the ordinance dated November 24, 1975. To the north is R3 RP Planned Multiple Family Residence District where there is a professional office building. To the east, it's Zoned R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District where there are townhomes. To the south, it's Zoned C2 Commercial where there's a barn and farm ground. And to the west, it's Zoned M1 Light Industrial Mid Country Machinery is located there, directly across the street from the lot in question. The 5.45 acres in question is vacant. A professional office building was constructed to the northeast in 2005. Townhomes were constructed to the southeast in 1982. There are...all utilities would serve the area. There's an 8-inch utility easement and a 60-foot landscape area easement located along the northwest property line of the parcel C7, C8. There's a 25-foot building line located along the northeast and southeast property lines. The future land use map designates this area as mixed commercial, medium-to-high density residential, professional offices, neighborhood commercial. The request appears to be in conformance with the future land use map, which is a component of the comprehensive plan for the city of Waterloo. The applicant is requesting to rezone the 5.45 acres of property in order to construct a building for an electrical business. The rezon would also allow for future commercial development in the area. The applicant has submitted a floor plan for the structure, which is approximately 2,866 square feet in size and contains a garage, storage room, restroom, break room, and two offices. The applicant needs to submit a site plan that includes but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. If the applicant does not submit a site plan at this time, they will need to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for a site plan amendment. The CP Planned Commercial District is intended and designed to provide a means for the residential and compatible commercial developments of tracts of land on a unit basis, allowing greater flexibility and diversification of land uses and billing locations than the conventional single lot method. The current zoning and approved site plan that shows this area developing as commercial, but the R3 RP Planned Multiple Resident District only allows for C1 Commercial District uses, and the proposed rezon would all allow for C2 Commercial District uses. The area is designated for mixed-use commercial within the future land use map, works to direct such developments into areas of transformation from commercial to residential based on current developments. On the submitted site plan, the applicant showed a building setback with 20 feet along Charm Drive. However, the plat book for this area indicates that there is a 25-foot building line parallel to Charm Drive. Therefore, the building would need to be pushed back an additional five feet. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to rezone the 5.45 acres from R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District to CP Planned Commercial District to allow for the construction of a new electrician contractor business and for future development generally located at the southeast corner of Southland Drive and Sergeant Road or US Highway 63 be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request is in conformance with the future land use map for this area and subject to the following conditions: that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, and that a more detailed and updated site plan is submitted for review. Are there any questions for staff?
I have a second question. This is Thornsberry. I'm unclear. In your staff analysis zoning ordinance, you say in the second paragraph, last sentence, if the applicant does not submit a site plan at this time, they will need to come before again. And then over in the staff recommendation, you say that one of the conditions is that a more detailed and updated site plan be submitted for review. Help me understand the sequence and timing.
Yeah, Eric, you want to explain that? I didn't actually write the staff report. Adrian's out of town.
This is Schrader with staff. So I'm not exactly sure on the timing of when we received what, but initially, when the application came in, we did not have any site plan. We did subsequently get a site plan, which is page six of your packet. I've also got it up on the television screen. It's an extremely basic site plan that provides for the dimensions of the lot and some rough setbacks for the building being on there. It is not a detailed enough site plan that is sufficient for a planned district such as this for site plan approval. Need a little more detailed site plan. The applicant has indicated that they are working on one. We have not seen it yet, but one that would have more details on the building, the setbacks of the buildings, the layout of the parking and vehicular use areas, the layout of green space areas, detention area, access points. All of that information is part of a site plan approval for a planned district, whether it's through the initial rezon or through a subsequent site plan amendment approval process. So that's what we're just noting. If we don't get that more detailed site plan before we would send this on to council, it would have to then, at a later date, come back through a site plan amendment process before they would be able to move forward with the proposed construction.
So that being said, Eric, would we be better to table this rather than make a motion to approve subject to getting that? Because we don't know when we're going to get it, how long it's going to take.
It's certainly something that can be considered. I'm not sure if the applicant is here. The applicant might want to...I believe the applicant is here. You know, they might want to have them comment a little bit and talk about, you know, their timeline. I'm not sure, you know, urgency of timeline from their standpoint.
Sure. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, if anyone would like to speak for or against this proposal and this request, we ask that you please step forward to the podium. Ask that you state your name and address for the record. Also, any commission members, please state your name before speaking to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, I would turn this back to the commission and get a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Steve and seconded that we close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes, and I turn it back again for the commission for final thoughts, questions, or motion.
This is Gustafson. I just feel like, at the time, we really can't make a recommendation until we see the updated site plan. And so I would make a motion that we tabled this, just simply because we don't have enough information to be able to make a concerted decision on it.
Okay. It's been moved by Carol that we tabled this request. Is there a second? Okay. It's been moved by Carol and seconded that we table this request until...saying this correctly for the motion, Carol, until we have more information on a more detailed site plan. Okay, is there any discussion?
I have recent...this is Morrison. It's recently been brought to my attention that sometimes when we table development, we really throw the developer and the project off track. So could we ask the applicant a question? I'm not sure which person.
I don't think the applicant is here. I was originally thinking he was, but that's for one of the next requests. The person I thought was the applicant, so it doesn't look like they're here.
Okay.
And this is Thornsberry. Because Miller isn't here either, we don't have the ins and outs or real details on that. So I would be in favor of passing this with the conditions that the site plan be developed, and it's then incumbent upon the draftsman to get it to us...get it to the planning and zoning in a timely manner.
But we don't have any information, Jerry, before us right now to even act on it because we haven't seen any kind of a site plan that gives us any information about what the intention of this developer is.
I think we have the words in it.
This is Morrison. I think their intent is to build an electrical shop for their existing business.
I know, but the site plan that we have before us on page six is basically a square within a square. Doesn't give us any details. It doesn't give us any information about what the final product is going to look like.
This is Tackett. I am agreeing with Carol on this, and I understand from a development point of view, but I think either way, it would still...we're dealing with a time period because they would still have to get back with information before go forward. And I would be more comfortable seeing more information before, which is simply...and that's just my opinion. I think that's where you're coming from, Carol. I'd like to have more information instead of just blank checking, "Okay, looks good," and then fill in the details later because we don't know. And I'm always a little hesitant saying okay to something and then coming back and finding out maybe there are some things that I should have looked at. So I can see both sides, but I think that's before. So right now, the motion is on the table to table this until we do get more of a detailed site plan, and we can maybe come back with more information and have a better understanding, if I understand that correctly.
Yes, please.
Okay. And good discussion, though. Any other final thoughts or words?
Better do a roll call.
Okay. Roll call vote, and a yes vote would be to approve the tabling until we have more information.
Ready? Thornsberry?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Guess we didn't need a roll call.
Okay, motion passes. Good discussion, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is...pardon me. Request by Noah Sebrian to rezone 0.32 acres from C2 Commercial District to C2 CZ Conditional Zoning Commercial District for the purpose of establishing an auto repair business located at 2006 Dubuque Road. It begins on page 12, and...at this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on October 28, 2015." And can we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Leah and seconded that we receive and place this notice on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Staff report.
This is Andero, staff. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property at 2006 Dubuque Road for the purposes of establishing an auto repair business. The area of the proposed rezon is Zoned C2 Commercial District and has been zoned as such since October of 1975, when it was rezoned from R2 One and Two Family Residence District. Surrounding land uses and their zoning include to the north, light industrial development and Chicago Central Railroad, Zoned R2 CZ Conditional Zoning District; south, single-family residences, Zoned R2 One and Two Family; east, single-family residents and Chicago Central Railroad, Zoned R2; and west, commercial development, Zoned C2 Commercial District. The area is comprised of commercial and residential development, along with some light industrial uses, with residential uses being developed in the early 1900s and commercial industrial uses being developed in the 1960s up till 2009. Future land use map designates this area as commercial, and the rezon request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area. Comprehensive plan notes commercial uses as being uses that involve the retail sale of goods and/or services to the public for the purpose of profit, and the site is located within the primary growth area of the city. As noted, this is a request to rezon 0.32 acres of land at the southeast corner of Nevada Street and Dubuque Road from C2 Commercial District to C2 CZ Conditional Zoning District for the purpose of establishing an auto repair business. The C2 Commercial District does allow auto repair uses when it is incidental and accessory to an automobile sales establishment, but not including uses in which the major source of revenues from body and fender work. The previous owner of the site had auto repair along with automobile sales...along with an automobile sales lot, therefore, the auto repair was permitted. The current applicant wants to have auto repair as a primary use with only incidental vehicle sales from the site, which is not permitted until the M1 Light Industrial District. Staff feels that allowance to have the auto repair as the primary use would not negatively impact the surrounding area, with the condition that the site be limited to auto repair or uses permitted in the C2 Commercial District. The building is set up for auto repair work to occur, with there being four service bases with vehicle lifts and an office area at the front of the building. Staff recommends that the request to rezon approximately 0.32 acres of land from C2 Commercial to C2 CZ Conditional Zoning District be approved for the following reasons: request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area; two, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area; three, the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which is designated as commercial, and with the following conditions: one, that the use be limited to an automobile repair use or any use permitted in the C2 Commercial District; two, construction of a solid fence along the southern property line at least six feet in height to screen the use from the residential uses to the south; three, parking stops/bollards are shown setback three feet from the west property line along Nevada Street to keep vehicles from parking on the adjacent sidewalk; four, that the vehicular use area is setback five foot from the north property line of vacated Dubuque Road right-of-way; and five, that a six-inch curb is constructed along the north side of the vehicular use area adjacent to Dubuque Road.
Okay, any questions for staff?
This is Flynn. Was there any concern by the neighbors at all?
No comments were received on the request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Okay, if anyone would like to speak for or against this request, we ask that you please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. I would ask also for the commission members, please state their name before speaking.
Hi, Brandon Gray with the Redfern Law Firm, 415 Place Street in Cedar Falls. Good afternoon. I am proud to represent Noah and Salivi Sebrian who are here with us. Go ahead and wave. They're the owners of Latino Auto Sales, which is currently an auto sales...or an auto service, I'm sorry. They're currently an auto repair business located on Independence. Really, this request is as part of a success story. They're moving into a larger space, and this location will allow their business to continue to grow and expand. The reason that we're before you this evening is simply a zoning issue. The current zoning rules allow only auto repair that's ancillary to auto sales. They're an auto repair business, and frankly, the location itself isn't conducive to doing both at once. It's a pretty small parking area, and so this will really allow them to focus on auto repair and not also have auto sales as well. They accept the conditions placed by staff. They're willing to comply with them. If you have any questions for either myself or Noah and Salivi, we'd certainly welcome them, but thank you for considering the request.
Thank you. Anyone else I could come forward and speak for or against this request? If not, I would turn it back over to the commission for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Carol and seconded that we close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the hearing is closed. I would also turn this back over to the commission for final thoughts, discussion, or motion. And this is Tackett. I don't think there's a conflict interest, but I will tell you, I do know this family. It's been a long time. I taught their children, and I think you were getting the business started, or I remember the early years. I am very happy to see the business grow. I was surprised, and that's a good thing. It's nice to see the economy grow and to do well, and so congratulations, so that is wonderful.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is Hall, and this is actually probably a question for staff, or I'm not exactly sure. It looks as if the sort of eastern part of the lot, is that unpaved?
This is Schrader with staff. As part of the original site plan from when the previous property owner went through the approval process to build on there, the eastern part was shown as not going to be developed, just remaining grass. There were multiple issues with what actually got built, not complying with, you know, what the site plan that showed was, and some of those issues persist today, but the applicant understands what they are and is working to get all of that cleared up, so it will in the end be fully compliant. But one of the issues was that easterly end was paved with a recycled asphalt, which is not an acceptable approved hard surface area, so that is one of the areas that was not compliant. The applicant is proposing to go before the Board of Adjustment, asking for a temporary variance to be able to keep that for a temporary period of time before he would then bring it into compliance with a proper hard surfacing.
This is Morrison. Going off of Tavis's question, I thought the triangle area is labeled pond. I thought this was a retention pond.
Yes, they will be required. The original site plan showed a detention pond in this vicinity as well, but it was never built. So he is proposing to put in the detention pond in that far easterly corner there. There's also a request for vacate that'll be coming up on the agenda, which would, if approved, get him some additional right-of-way along Dubuque Road there, which will make some additional room for both parking and that detention area. But the proposal would be that he'd put in the pond area in the far eastern corner, and then there would be some of what's currently a recycled asphalt area that, if the Board of Adjustment approves the temporary variance, would remain for a period of time to be determined by the board, but then would get hard surface.
And will the access point for the business always be off of Nevada? It won't ever be off of Dubuque Road, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they currently have access from Nevada Street. I think it would be extremely unlikely that they would be allowed to get access from Dubuque Road. I mean, even if they were able to get it, it would be a right-in, right-out because there's a median there, but I think given the proximity to the intersection with Nevada, it would be extremely unlikely that they would ever be able to get a Dubuque Road access.
And that curve is really, really bad, so I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't part of what was being proposed.
No, they are not proposing any access from Dubuque Road.
So just to clarify, the issue with the retaining pond, from your understanding, is going to go before Board of Adjustment. There's going to be a request for a...
Variance.
For a variance, at least for a time period?
For the recycled asphalt, they'll have to put the detention pond...they'll...I mean, it looks like the recycled asphalt goes pretty much all the way into that little corner, so they'll probably have to rip out a portion of that to put the detention pond in right-of-way, and then they would propose to keep whatever's left between what they don't have to rip out for the detention pond and, you know, where the current permanent pavement is as recycled asphalt for a period of time.
Got you.
This is Tackett. I know if he can answer the question, do you know approximately how long? Is it just going to have time to get some bids or...because the concern that I noticed...
noticed too was that with the, with the temporary asphalt, it's the runoff and coming into season and then the rains and the snows, is there a timetable that they're looking at?
Yes, Brandon Gray again. The reason for the variance is actually an issue that's on the agenda yet this evening, which is the right-of-way acquisition on the north edge. The current property, the previous property owner actually built an area that encroaches on that right-of-way a little bit. To make the proposed site plan work with the size of that retaining area in the southeast corner, the right-of-way acquisition on the north side's a necessary part of this. So the reason for the variance is simply so that the right-of-way acquisition process can go through because that it's going to require the appraisal, longer-term process. And once that's gone through and the right-of-way has been acquired, then they can move ahead and actually pave the entire area at once as opposed to paving part now and then waiting and paving the remainder later. So the proposal to the Board of Adjustment is, I believe we requested two years or until the right-of-way acquisition process is completed. And so the goal is just to complete the right-of-way acquisition and then go ahead and get the whole area paved.
This is Schrader with staff. This is a former state highway, so based on a recent Iowa Supreme Court ruling, the process that has to be followed, it is slow, unfortunately.
This is Hall, I'd make the recommendation, I'd make the motion to approve with the conditions as noted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Tavis and Second that we approve this request to rezone approximately .32 acres of land from C2 Commercial District to C2 CZ Conditional Zoning District with the following conditions, pardon me, that the use be limited to an automobile repair use or any use permitted in the C2 Commercial District, that the construction of a solid fence along the southern property line be at least six feet in height, pardon me, in radius. Parking stops and bollards are shown setback three feet from the west property line along Nevada Street to keep vehicles from parking on the adjacent sidewalk, that the vehicular use area is setback five feet from the north property line of vacated Dubuque Road right-of-way, and that a six-inch curb is constructed along the north side of the vehicular use area adjacent to the Dubuque Road. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. The next item is our last hearing under new business, and that is a request by the City of Waterloo to rezone 23.4 acres from M2 Heavy Industrial District to R2 1-2 Family Residence District for future development of the former Chamberlain Manufacturing Site located at 550 Esther Street that begins on page 21. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Pat McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on October 28, 2015." We have a motion received and placed as notice on file.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Leah and Seconded that we receive and place this notice on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Staff report.
This is Western with staff. The proposed area is currently zoned M2 Heavy Industrial District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. The residential and park areas to the southwest and northwest are all zoned R2 1-2 Family Residential Districts, and the golf course to the east and northeast is zoned A1 Agricultural District. George Washington Carver Elementary School is four blocks directly west of the site. Gates Park is directly to the south and Gates Park Golf Course is directly to the east. The future land use map designates this particular site as industrial, however, if the rezoning is approved, we are under contract with Enterco to update the entire comprehensive plan and the future land use map and will update the new, hopefully the new rezone classification. Little information about the site, the industrial operations at the site began in 1920. The plant manufactured washing machine ringers, aluminum awnings, refrigerator shelves, and sprayers. Chamberlain was also contracted by the Department of Defense to assemble munitions. They manufactured tank ammunition, warheads, and developed the manufactured components for the Patriot missile during the Gulf War in the early 1990s. Since then, a series of layoffs occurred at the plant with the final closing in August of 1994. 1996, a private corporation acquired the site, was going to use the facility for cold storage with a contract with John Deere. That did not ever happen, the building sat vacant for many years. In 2003, the City of Waterloo was awarded a $300,000 assessment grant to address the brownfield issues at the former Chamberlain Manufacturing Site. The city then took possession of the property in 2005 and has since demolished all of the buildings and is working with Chamberlain and EPA on a remediation plan for the site. The City of Waterloo has requested that Chamberlain remediate the site to residential standards to give the city more flexibility for future development, redevelopment of the site. The City of Waterloo took possession of the site to help remediate any potential contaminants on the site and as a first step towards positive redevelopment. Located in the heart of the built-up area of the community, the site has been a blight upon the landscape of this neighborhood for many years and the city wants to keep moving forward towards its redevelopment. Therefore, rezoning the site from heavy industrial to residential will be consistent with the city's request to have the site remediated to residential standards. Therefore, staff recommends the request to rezone approximately 23.4 acres from M2 Heavy Industrial District to R2 1-2 Family Residence District for future development of the former Chamberlain Manufacturing Site located at 550 Esther Street be approved for the following reasons. The request would make the site more compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhoods, parks, and golf course. The request better coincides with our request to EPA and Chamberlain Manufacturing to remediate the site to residential standards. The request would appear to be a logical step for the overall future land use map to show compatibility with the surrounding land uses. The request would appear to be one of several steps towards trying to redevelop the area to a more positive tax-paying site in the community. Are there any questions for staff? Yes.
This is Gustafson. My concern is, I'm hearing you talk about brownfield issues that you mentioned in the staff analysis, can you please define brownfield?
Well, very simply put, a brownfield is either a site that is contaminated or perceived to be contaminated.
Okay, so that brings me to my second question, which is, what remediation will the City of Waterloo be doing to the site to make it safe for families and children to live at that site?
Well, the city won't be doing any remediation. EPA has an administrative order with Chamberlain or Dutchess Walle, the parent company of Chamberlain. They are being requested and they're cooperating quite well. They're putting together a cleanup plan for the site now that we've characterized the site and we know the size of the contamination and the different types of contamination at the site, which by the way is pretty consistent with any industrial site pre-EPA. It's typically just solvents that get spilled onsite. So we're working with EPA and Chamberlain. They're putting together a cleanup plan, EPA has to approve it. Once it's been approved, then Chamberlain will go in and start the steps to clean up the groundwater and any soil issues at the site. Now, we're rezoned at R2, not necessarily saying we are going to be pushing for houses on the site, we're just saying that we've asked EPA, or Chamberlain and EPA, to clean it up so that it could actually have housing, safe housing there. We just think that was the best level cleanup that we should be asking for, being that everything around us residential and parks and things like that.
Well, I know, everything around it is, but when you're talking about ammunition dump, for the most part, which it was for a good number of years, you're talking about heavy metal saturation of the ground. It just really concerns me that, I want to make sure that as a community, we're doing the very best that we can to assure that nobody is going to be detrimentally affected by this site.
Yep.
It's been sitting there contaminating that part of the city for much too long.
Yeah, we're well aware of that, we've been working on it since 2000, so.
This is Tackett, go to law that my concern, it's my concern is a timetable. I'm just trying to think, based on requests we have before, my hesitant in approving the change now is, right now it's an M2, so you cannot develop houses on that. And I feel like they should, Chamberlain should have it all cleaned up and have it pass EPA standards before we change the zoning. I just feel like if someone sees it's been changed to R2 and they come in and they want to say, "Well, we want to put some development in here," I just don't want any communication think that they're going to finish doing their obligation now to get this new development, because we've seen things come through where everybody gets real anxious and I am very hesitant to push, because of that. Does that make sense?
It does.
I think it's just a M2 until the job's done.
However, what you have to understand though is, it was explained by EPA that if you're going to request that it be cleaned up to a higher standard than what it's zoned, you're going to get pushed back. So if you want it cleaned up to residential standard, then you need to change it to residential zoning. If you leave it at industrial, they've already pushed to clean it up to industrial standards. So as long as you leave it as industrial, that's what they're going to push to clean it up to, is industrial standards, which...
Okay, that makes sense. Is there something that can be put in so that when the zoning goes through and a potential developer from either out of state or out of town sees it, they understand that until that has been placed at acceptable standards? That's my concern.
I challenge you to find a developer that would jump on that and want to do it anyway.
Right. This is Flynn, has there been any expressed interest at all? I mean, in a lot of vacant areas, there have been, so is there any express interest known to the city?
No. No, and we've had many discussions over since 2000 neighborhood meetings and that's the last thing, well, that's one of the things that most of the neighborhood or pretty much everyone in the neighborhood is not too excited about. We own the property, we can control what goes there. So we're not going to allow a developer to develop something that's going to be potentially dangerous.
Or let them develop before it's properly cleaned up.
Right.
So if it is changed to R2, you still have control over what can go in that?
Correct.
Okay. And also, just in the report, I know at Public Open School Spaces, it says George Washington Carver Elementary, that's a middle school, and the elementary closest to there would be Cunningham.
Jerry, you're our water guru, what do you have to say on this matter?
I, this is Sorenzberry, I, I don't know, I wouldn't say I'm a guru, but the, I absolutely agree with changing the zoning because then we get a higher level. I lived in New Jersey when we had an exact thing, exactly like this, and what happened was they made it a park, the city community made it a park, and then to come to find out 10 years later that we were poisoning our kids. And so I would like to see the EPA or Chamberlain clean it up to that higher level standard and I'd love the city to just plant it with some sort of prairie, for example, that have the deep roots and let nature clean whatever is left and not develop it for another 15 years or something, so that we really are absolutely confident that none of that nasty stuff is left.
And the city will be working, we work very, very closely with EPA and things, those suggestions you just made are, have already been discussed many times. We just got to get to the point where the groundwater is really the issue, is not so much the soil. We got to get that groundwater cleaned up to a real good standard first. And once that's done, then there's other things we can be putting in place to ensure that it's safe in the future.
And this is Flynn, what is the estimated time for the cleanup then? Because obviously, does Chamberlain have a lot of dollars to throw into this?
Yes, and they've already spent quite a bit so far just assessing and characterizing the site. The timeframe, I haven't seen the final cleanup plan, I don't think it's actually done yet, EPA's reviewing it. But basically, it's until it's cleaned up to the right standard. So, yeah.
Which could be how long?
Oh, it could be 10, 15, 20 years. Obviously, they don't want to spend that much time doing it, but we've been very specific in our desires to have it that clean and if it takes 20 years, then it takes 20 years.
And the city has the final say, not the EPA?
Well, the EPA has final say, but the EPA is making our wishes a part of what they're asking Chamberlain to do. So they're listening to everything that we want and they're incorporating that into all of their requests.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Okay, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak for against this request, we ask you to come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. I'd also ask that the mission, commission members also state their name before speaking. See, Noe, I would turn it back to the commission, I believe this, you wait? Yeah. Okay, like to have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Stephen Second that we close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. I turn it back to the commission for final thoughts and/or motion.
This is Morrison, I just have one question. Blackwell's, you live closest to the site and you have had no opinion, are you good with this?
Yeah, because we need to move forward. I like your idea though, it's going to take 15 minutes for the EPA to complete, or Chamberlain to complete it, a prairie, you know, a natural way of, you know, but that would involve the city going in there and planting it, not Chamberlain or EPA or whatever. But that would be a good suggestion. Because there are people in that neighborhood that perceive that there's a problem still, that they get some kind of leakage from their basements or problems and stuff like that. But, you know, having a positive move, the city can make a positive move and plant that into a prairie, but yes, I do believe we need to move forward and it's just like now, as it's zoned now, it's just sitting there. We need to move forward as this plan shows.
And I like, no, go ahead. I just like that clarification too about the R2, and I like the idea now, I know there's a program or something here in the city where, you know, they try to incorporate even on the residential area, certain plants, and I'm biology major, so I'm thinking certain ones that would really filter, isn't that something that would also be very low maintenance? Because if you get the right plants to take it in, you would just let nature, like you said, take itself, so it doesn't require like mowing and upkeep, it should just, you know, a low...
You don't mow a prairie.
Yeah, so you just put it in and again, I think that'd be a lot, you know, less expense and a responsible way for nature takeover, so.
Make a motion that we approve the request.
Okay, okay, so moved by Leah and Second that we approve this request. Any final thoughts or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Our next item on our agenda is a special permit. This one is a request by Blackhawk County for a special permit in order to install a fence around a new electric generator located at 316 East Fifth Street that begins on page 27. You also should have a handout that will show examples, should be a two-page clip. And staff report.
This is Graham with staff. Yeah, that attachment just came in today, so that's why I did not make the packet, so that's why we got that handed out to you today. The applicant is requesting approval of a special permit in order to construct a 10-foot tall solid fence, which would be constructed around three sides of a new electrical generator to be installed at the Blackhawk County Courthouse. The request would not appear to have any negative impact on the surrounding area as the surrounding land uses are mainly commercial and governmental in nature. The request would not appear to have any negative impacts on traffic in the area as the fence would not hinder any sightlines for any vehicles or pedestrians, and there are sidewalks located along each side of the courthouse property. Zoning ordinance does not require any buffering around the proposed generator that the county is installing, however, they are proposing... that the county is installing. However, they are proposing to construct that 10-foot solid fence around those three sides in order to buffer it from any view. Blackhawk County is in the process of placing a backup electrical generator on the site of the courthouse. The county has constructed, I guess what we're guessing is an approximate 10 by 20-foot concrete pad for the generator, which will be located on the north side of the building along Mulberry Street. There are no entrances located near this location except for an emergency exit located nearby. Otherwise, the area is just a grassy area located between the sidewalk and the courthouse building. Now, the applicant's proposing to construct a 10-foot-tall solid fence around the location of the generator in order to help screen it from the surrounding properties. The fence would be installed along three sides of the generator with the side facing the courthouse building being left open. The county has not decided on the fence type yet, as they would like to construct it with material that blends in with the colors of the courthouse. And that's kind of what you've seen in front of you is a couple of different renderings of what the fence could potentially look like. The zoning ordinance does restrict fences to a maximum height of eight feet, so a variance will be required by the Board of Adjustment in order to construct the fence at that 10-foot height as they're proposing. The applicant has indicated that the generator would be approximately 10 feet in height as well, so the 10-foot-tall fence would help screen the entire generator. The zoning ordinance does require a special permit for any public building or use erected or maintained by any department of the city, township, county, state, or federal government. The placement of the generator has been determined to be an accessory use to the courthouse. However, the fence, since it is being proposed with a height above the maximum allowed, has been considered a major change and therefore approval of the special permit is required. Also, this request will require approval from the Main Street Design Review Board. Therefore, staff is recommending that the request for the special permit to offer the construction of a 10-foot-tall fence around the electric generator at the courthouse be approved, as the request would not appear to have any negative impacts on the surrounding properties or traffic conditions. Two, the proposed fence, although not required, would help to screen the generator from public view. And three, the fence and generator location, while on a street frontage, is not the front of the courthouse, nor is it, or is it the site of the main parking lot entrance, and therefore would appear to be a logical location for that use, and subject to the following condition, that the fence is constructed with materials and coloring that is deemed appropriate for the area as determined by the Board of Adjustment and the Main Street Design Review Board.
Any questions for staff?
I have one. This is Sorensberg. I have a question. Do we have any ordinance about sound abatement, noise abatement, when this generator cuts in?
This is Schrader with staff. There is a noise ordinance as part of the code of ordinances that I assume would be applicable. It's enforced by the police department. I don't, I don't know the exact numbers, but there's a certain sound decibel level that if you exceed it at the property line and the number changes, like daytime hours versus evening hours, it's a quieter level that it has to be on the evening hours. But I would guess that the generator's not going to have any issues with that. But the applicant is here. He might be able to address that more.
Hello, Rory Givens. Yeah, the, I guess the topic of discussion for this evening is the fence and the height. The material construction of this fence, not sure if that will have any effect on the decibels that the generator will emit. I can tell you that this generator comes equipped with a full enclosure of itself. So it does have a muffler on this. And I also have a representative from Modus Engineering. I can't tell you exactly what those DBs are from this generator, but I know that was a topic of conversation. And I believe we are well within the limits on that. Does that help?
Yeah, I was just thinking if the fence could help with additional insurance about the noise.
Yeah, I doubt that the fence is going to have a real effect on that. It's more for appearance.
If you look back in the tech notes from the technical review, Eric Thorson was there and he did not question at all the noise. And Eric's usually pretty thorough. So I would think if he had a concern, he would have raised it at that time. And it is a backup generator, right?
Correct.
So it's not going to be running all the time. It's only if all else fails.
I believe that to be correct.
Yeah.
Ryan Vestal with Modus Engineering. Yeah, it's a 100% emergency backup generator. And like Rory said, it's, it's equipped with a special sound attenuated enclosure. So it cuts the sound level less than like a lawnmower would be running outside. So.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This is Flynn. The only thing I would say is with the one drawing rendering, with it being white, I would guard against that with graffiti. That would be a pretty open spot for graffiti. So, just a comment.
This is Sorensberg. I like when we plant more trees, so the one with the arborvitus.
This is Hall and sort of along the lines of design, you know, staff recommendation, actually, I think it's by ordinance, that it has to be approved by Main Street Design Review. So Rory, can you speak to the process of designing the fence? We see there's three different options. One that's currently bid, which looks like the least expensive option? And why that, why it's bid at the least, just explain the process of why that's bid at the least expensive, if we've got other options for that.
Well, when this, when this project was originally put together, putting a fence around this generator was really kind of a secondary thought to the original project. We understood that it wasn't a requirement of us, the county, to put a fence around this. But out of courtesy, we did bring in Waterloo Review, Main Street Design, and wanted to open this up for discussion. So the original intent was to put an enclosure. We did another generator project at another county facility and we used a vinyl fencing and that actually served us very well. But we quickly realized that downtown here with a vinyl fencing, that the appearance might not be as well received from some. And so we reached out after the fact and we reached out to a local architect to put some renderings together. And that's what you're looking at this evening. No direction other than the approved design, which is the vinyl fencing has been received from the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors at this time. These renderings will be proposed to the boards, to the Board of Supervisor, but please understand that anything outside of the already approved vinyl fencing will come at an added cost. So that will be at the discretion of the Blackhawk Board of Supervisors. For an added cost, we can have the other two options as options. So that's really the stage where we're at right now. Right now, we know we want to go at least 10-foot if we choose to put a fence around this unit. We want to go the 10-foot because that encloses the height that conceals the generator 100%. Material construction, though, as Shane indicated, that is still up for discussion. And it will be somewhat cost-driven. Does that answer your question?
Yes, in part, you know, I remember reading and I'm a part of the design review and so, through Main Street. And, you know, certainly, it was, it was brought to our attention that the fence was going to be proposed. I don't recall any sort of level of input and back and forth, which I think, as a part of sort of a downtown neighborhood, even though we all work here, frankly, I spend more time here than I do awake at home. And so, you know, just sort of the neighborly thing, I'm hopeful that Main Street Design Review will be consulted further and making sure that it's an aesthetic design that allows for continuity throughout the downtown. The city has entrusted Main Street with that design review process because it is incredibly important in terms of even development of what this downtown looks like. And so while I understand that the first option that was currently bid is the lowest cost, frankly, we just heard a supervisor talking about how the county was 74% debt-free in five years and 100% debt-free in 10 years. And so the addition of shrubs, the cheapest isn't always the best. As a guy who likes steaks, I can tell you, the cheapest isn't always the best. And so hopefully, the county will hold true to that and then, and really include Main Street because those folks have dedicated years, frankly, in making sure that there's a level of design and aesthetic standard throughout the downtown. And they are a valuable piece of what makes this downtown work.
This is Tackett. I like the shrubbery going around that for two reasons. I think it would not only look more aesthetically nice, but it would discourage any vandalism for the, you're saying about graffiti, because you're not going to take the time to go through shrubs and do that. So I think it, I know, it just might do sense. I think that might be a win-win on both sides.
Sorry, another quick question. That third option is the composite fence. Can you sort of, what material is that?
It's, the way it was described to me, it's very similar to the material that was used on the sportsplex here in Waterloo. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. That's how it was explained to me.
Doesn't City Hall have a generator and a fence back on this side? What is, what is that covered with? Do we know?
There's arborvitus.
Okay, okay. It would seem to me that our courthouse and our City Hall very much look alike. And so even working off of that model that's currently on City Hall might make sense.
And like I had mentioned earlier, for the purpose of this meeting, you know, we really are looking at, you know, we know we want to put a 10-foot structure in there in order to conceal the generator. That material construction, I believe the Board of Supervisors are very aware of, you know, that whatever we put around there, they're sensitive. I believe Main Street Design did approach the Board of Supervisors at the time when this was awarded to express their concerns of the vinyl fencing. So I don't want to speak too much for them, but I, you know, as I mentioned, we got these three options that we will put in front of the Board of Supervisors. There is a substantial cost difference between the three. The option with the arborvitus, that's, that's very doable, in my opinion. The white vinyl fencing has already been approved and budgeted. By simply putting some vegetation around that vinyl fencing, I think we do accomplish camouflage of that fence. And then the vinyl fencing serves more protection, in a sense, as well, around the generator. But I think the Board of Supervisors is also aware that no fencing at all can be appropriate as well. But I think the goal is to try to get something that meets everybody's approval with regards to appearance. So hopefully, this helps.
This is Flynn. I think we need to lobby our Board of Supervisors if there's a certain way we want it.
Certainly. And to that, I mean, do we have, is our commission, I think, quite a few of us here anyways, could look at certain options here and sort of rule them out immediately, even if, or is that something that's just best saved for Main Street Design Review?
You can include that as part of your, this is Schrader with staff, include that as part of your recommendation, that you would not recommend approval of this design. You would recommend approval of this design?
I'd like to call the question. Okay, this time, we would like to have a motion to either pass or deny.
I move that we approve the request for a special permit to allow for the construction of a 10-foot-tall fence around an electric generator located at the Blackhawk County Courthouse. Be approved for the reasons stated in the report by staff and subject to the following condition, that the fence is constructed with materials and coloring that is deemed to be appropriate for the area as determined by the Board of Adjustment and the Main Street Design Review Board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chair and Second that we go ahead and approve the request for the special permit to allow for the construction of the 10-foot-tall fence around the electric generator located at the Blackhawk County Courthouse, and subject to the condition that the fence is constructed with materials and coloring as deemed by the Board of Adjustment and the Main Street Design Review Board.
Does anyone think we need a throw call or?
No. Okay, any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our next area on the agenda are vacates. The first one is a request by NoSavering to vacate 0.23 acres of right-of-way located 2006 Dubuque Road that begins on page 34. Staff report.
This is Zandero with staff. Applicant is requesting to vacate the right-of-way in question for the purposes of incorporating it with the site they own at 2006 Dubuque Road at the southeast corner of Nevada Street and Dubuque Road. The area requested to be vacated is .23 acres of city right-of-way. There appears to be possibility of vacation, a portion of the right-of-way along the south side of Dubuque Road, as there appears to be no utilities within the area in question. Applicant is showing on the submitted vacate document to vacate a portion of right-of-way directly at the southeast corner of Nevada Street and Dubuque Road, which does have two utility poles and a traffic signal. That portion of the right-of-way vacate plan will need to be updated to exclude this area. Applicant recently purchased this property and the previous owner had multiple code violations ranging from a vehicular use area that encroaches into Dubuque Road right-of-way and an unapproved hard surfacing to the east of the building. In recent action taken by the Board of Adjustment, the encroaching vehicular use area was required to be removed from the Dubuque Road right-of-way and have a setback of one foot from the north property line. The current applicant would like to see if the ability exists to vacate the right-of-way and not remove that paving, knowing that due to the angle of the property line, they have concerns on the narrowness of this lot. Dubuque Road at one time was Highway 20 before it was relocated to the south side of the city. Therefore, the right-of-way will need to be appraised before it is sold and offered back to previous owners, abiding owners, and properties that were a part of the overall acquisition parcel to follow the state code. Staff recommends that the request to vacate the approximately .23 acres of Dubuque Road right-of-way be approved for the following reasons. One, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Two, the request would not appear to have negative impact on pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area as there appears to be excess right-of-way. Three, there appears to be no utilities within the right-of-way in question, and with the condition that the area needed for traffic signals and equipment shall be excluded from the vacate area.
Questions for staff?
This is Gus Stupson. Is there still railroad tracks along that area?
I believe, I'll have to look at the aerial photo here. I think there's railroad tracks along the north side of Dubuque Road. Yes. Just to the north of Dubuque Road, there is a Chicago Central.
There used to be a set of tracks that went through BPI Building Products and then went north and went west and then turned north. So I just was wondering if those tracks were still there.
Yeah, there are some on the north side of Dubuque Road.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Okay, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for against this request, we ask you please step forward the podium. Please state your name and address for the audience.
Thank you, Brandon Gray again. Good evening once more. This is just the second step of the process that we talked about a little bit earlier. As you can see from the site plan, this right-of-way, requested right-of-way is important to that southeast corner drainage area. And so again, I guess if you have any questions, feel free, let us know. Otherwise, we'd simply ask that you approve the right-of-way request and start the appraisal process. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, we'll turn it back to the commission for final thoughts or a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the request. I'd like to move that we approve the request for the vacate of the .23 acres on Dubuque Road, taking in consideration the staff recommendations and also the conditions that they stated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chair and seconded that we approve the request to vacate the approximately .23 acres of Dubuque Road right-of-way with the request and the conditions stated by the staff. Any discussion? All those in favor.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Okay.
Davis.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Our second vacate request this evening is a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate 0.50 acres of right-of-way located at the southwest corner of Utica Street and Broadway Street that begins on page 43. Staff report.
This is Western with staff. The request, or the area in question is on the future land use map designated as semi-public utilities, hospitals, railroad, and this request would not technically be in compliance with such designation. However, the site is located within a primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. The request to vacate the .50 acres of excess right-of-way at the southwest corner of Utica and Broadway Streets could potentially provide for land to be developed by adjacent business Heating and Cooling LLC. Staff is working with the company on potential expansion on the existing business. The area was acquired for right-of-way when it was designated as US Highway 20, which has since been relocated, of course, to the south side of town, and jurisdiction and ownership of the former highway was transferred from the state of Iowa to City of Waterloo. As a former highway, as to us with the last request, we are following the state code 306.22 and 306.23, which includes appraisals and offering to other previous owners. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate .50 acres of excess right-of-way be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. And the request to vacate is, is not in accordance with comprehensive plan, but it would be, serve as a use that would be fitting for the existing area. The request would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Questions for staff?
This is Thornsberry. Let me get the staff recommendations clear. Is it request to vacate point 0.5, not 0.631?
Yeah, the first, .5.
.5, okay. And then on number three, is it the request to vacate is not in accordance?
It's not in accordance, but it is a compatible potential future use.
Okay.
That's what it should have read. Apologize.
And so when these corrections are made, do you correct your file copy so when it goes into the file folder, it's?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Okay, we turn it back to the commission for final thoughts or a motion.
I move that we approve the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate 0.50 acres of excess right-of-way at the southwest corner of Utica and Broadway Streets with the reasons identified in the staff recommendation. With number three being corrected to read, the request is to vacate is not in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area, but it is compatible with future uses.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chair and seconded that we approve the request to vacate the .50 acres of excess right-of-way along with the reasons stated, and that those statements in there will be corrected on the record. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Our final items for this evening are street namings. Looking through the tech report and everything, this seems like it's more of formality, so with this commission's permission, I would like to have all three, if that's okay, read back-to-back, and if we can have them all proved at once, that would move things along since they're pretty much the same thing, and there was no concern in the tech review report. Go to that page. Thank you. Okay, the first request is by the City of Waterloo, pardon me, to name three new private streets as Maxhellen Boulevard, Overlook Drive, and Lismore Lane. Staff report.
Western with staff. The City of Waterloo is proposing to name the three new private streets as Maxhellen Boulevard, Overlook Drive, Lismore Lane. These streets will serve the existing and expansion of Landmark Commons Development located off public Maxhellen Boulevard just east of Hammond Avenue. The engineering department has reviewed the naming of the streets and recommends approval of the naming of the new private streets, Maxhellen Boulevard, Overlook Drive, and Lismore Lane. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the street names be approved for the following reasons. The engineering department has reviewed the request and recommends that the naming of the private streets, Maxhellen Boulevard, Overlook Drive, and Lismore Lane be approved.
Any questions for staff?
This is Flynn. I have a question because it is already a public portion of Maxhellen Boulevard, and then it is going to be private. So as far as the maintenance of that road, who's responsible for the maintenance of public versus private Maxhellen Boulevard?
Assistant Engineer Dennis Gentsch is in the audience, so you can explain that.
Okay, Gentsch with the Engineering Department. The private portion would be maintained by the Landmark Commons. The public would be by the city. As it's currently named, the public street goes up to that intersection, as you might see on the drawing. And then actually, because Landmark Commons is addressed off of Maxhellen Boulevard, it makes more sense to extend that as a private street because it was constructed under private, you know, conditions as far as the thickness and all those details. It just seemed to make more sense to extend Maxhellen Boulevard as a name because of common, because of the actual address that's already been issued there, so.
So my only question to that would be, Flynn again, would be, you know, that area is full with a lot of elderly housing with Rosewood Estates and then the commons, as far as, let's say, our public gets the street plowed, but the private doesn't, or the private does and the public doesn't in the same timeframe. So how is that going to be coordinated?
Actually, I don't know. But other than, you know, there's additional private streets there that Landmark Commons would be responsible for, the Common Circle, as well as the new Lismore Lane and Overlook Drive, which is in the process right now of being extended over to Lismore. So that will be a complete connection around the facility there. I would have to check with our Public Works Department to see if there's any coordination efforts between the public and private snow removal.
Because I think that would be pretty important. My dad lived in Rosewood Estates, and I know that area wasn't done as a priority area, obviously it shouldn't be, but, and I'm just wondering with the people at the Landmark Commons, and if they get to where the private is done and that's plowed nicely, and then they get to the public, and so I think a coordination effort would really be in good order here.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, questions from the commission? Okay, we turn it back over for a motion.
I make a mention that we approve the three street names recommended.
Second.
It's been moved by Leah and seconded that we approve the names of the three streets, Maxhellen Boulevard, Overlook Drive, and Lismore Lane. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That brings us to our last item for discussion items. Any thoughts, discussions from the commission?
This is Thornsberry. I'd like to know how we're doing on our proposed ordinance for barnyard animals on residential lots.
This is Schrader with staff. It has been going a little slower than I would have wished. I do have, I've done some gathering, data gathering of how some other communities do it, and I found a publication specific to urban agricultural or urban hobby farms, whatever you want to call them, and kind of a guide for some recommended restrictions. So I think that will be very useful. I've started going through that. I've gotten sidetracked unfortunately on some other projects that have come up, but we'll see. I would like to have it ready for the December meeting. Might be a little bit of a stretch, but I'm still working on it.
Eric, with the runoff election coming up in December, are we going to need to change the date of our meeting?
We would not be able to, I don't remember why, the second Tuesday of the month is something.
Okay.
Anyone have a calendar in front of them?
I don't.
I can double-check that, but I think there would be a conflict with trying to move the December meeting. But I will double-check that.
Any other thoughts, comments? Okay.
Buckles, I move that the meeting be adjourned. Second.
It's been moved by Steve and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.